Okay, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Bath Charter Township Planning Commission. It's July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We've got agendas. No one's here, but are there any changes to the agenda? Any additions to the agenda as distributed?
The minute or the date?
The date, yes.
The date's wrong.
I saw that too. We're the eleventh and not the thirteenth. Alright, so we got that. Any, anything else?
Noting that, correction, I make the motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
You have support, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda's been approved. Are there any conflicts of interest that commissioners would like to declare? I don't see any, let's move on. General public comment? None right now? Uh, we have the minutes from June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Any comments on those minutes? Additions? Suggestions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted? I'm sorry, the, yeah, the minutes as submitted.
Make a motion for the minutes?
Alright. We have support by Ray at the end. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Miles, any communications?
Not this time.
Alright, alright. So we are on to old business. We have a sidewalk ordinance draft in our packet. Thanks, Miles. You gonna take us through some of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so this is in a little bit more of a refined state than you guys saw last time. We took your advice and simplified a number of the sections. We also, so basically it's been refined, it's been simplified. To kinda go through it, some of the changes we made from last time was we removed out of the definition of sidewalk, the portion of the street right away, 'cause as noted last time sidewalks aren't always in the street right away. As we're learning with the Webster Road Project, number of sidewalks we need easements for, 'cause they're not gonna be in the right way.
Right.
I got a question right at the front here. This thing came up on my computer, no?
Okay.
On the first page, you have sidewalk. Means the portion, means pathway, improve the concrete, and then down below you got definitely some pathway. That's kinda confusing.
Yeah, it's circular, 'cause you're using pathway in the sidewalk definition and sidewalk in the pathway definition.
Yeah.
You'll never end, it's like a death spiral.
Yeah. What do you think? You think we should remove the, uh, remove the definition of pathway altogether? It's not super necessary to the ordinance, I guess. We're just trying to cover our bases.
I think you could probably combine them, right? But, but take out pathway and then just, um,
Add the portions.
Add the part about bike lane trail, non-motorized.
Okay.
As part of the sidewalk definition, I think?
We'll come up with something. I get the point.
Is there a difference between pathway and sidewalk? Some places it is, and I don't know if you're trying to do that here or not.
For our purposes, for a bad township, I don't think we need to make that distinction, in my opinion. I don't know.
Yeah, we oughta just have one definition of it.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know how the planning commission feels.
But your pathway definition just is not, uh, um, hard surface, maybe. Doesn't necess, doesn't need to be hard surface.
Doesn't necessarily need to be hard surface. That could be a distinction.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to make that distinction, though, 'cause we're talking about sidewalks primarily here.
Right.
Make more sauce to remove it.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think it is helpful, though, to, to mention in the sidewalk definition, those, those activities, right, as, as you might see it. And, and maybe even add, because later, I have a question about this, but you have a distinction between pedestrian and non-motorized. So mentioning that in the definition as distinct, um, uses for sidewalks might be helpful.
Like define those uses, like a pede, like define pedestrian use versus non-motorized use?
You're talking about foot traffic primarily, and non-motorized is what, bike and everything wheeled, I guess? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we get into a problem with that, too, now with all your motorized scooters and stuff.
Well, that's why with non-motorized, and we did, we thought about roarblading, we thought about scooters, we thought about those, I don't even know what they're called. You stand on it, it's got two wheels, it's self-balances.
Segways.
Yeah.
Those are motorized, too.
People, well, I guess they are motorized.
Yeah, the big problem with those up on Mackinac Island, they're starting to outlaw, you can't even bring them to the island anymore. They're not supposed to. They're scaring the horses and everything else.
Yeah, I get that. Um, so anyways, I think we'll just keep it to non-motorized, we'll see what we come up with.
What's an upgrade?
Yeah, I think that's useful, 'cause later we actually go into, we set different standards for sidewalks. If it's gonna be a pedestrian sidewalk, we set a standard of five. If it's a, uh, non-motorized sidewalk intended for bicycles, roarblading, we set the standard of ten.
Right.
So, yeah, okay, that'll be useful. Okay, so we kept the purpose the same, we like that purpose, uh, built out, obviously, from the original one sentence. We thought we did a good job here with administration, enforcement, and authority of the township board, 'cause we were able to condense three different sections into one section, you know, simplifying is kind of the goal as we go through this. Uh, just one note, we did move D, uh, the township engineer, so supervising construction, repair, and so on, into its own, uh, subsection, but when we copy and paste that into the subsection, we didn't remove the copy from B, so it restates itself twice. We'll make the change, there's a couple things in here we're still cleaning up. Um, so going to the next section, there's also some small verbiage that we're gonna change there, but does anybody have any feedback on those two sections, I guess, before we move on? And if you take a look at this tonight, or over the weekend, you wanna obviously, as always, mark up a copy and send it in to us, please do so.
Where are you at, Miles?
Yeah, we are on.
Starting to try to follow.
Fifty-eight thirty-three.
Yep, thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay. Thirty-three or thirty-four?
Page ten.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, the whole of thirty-four. So now moving to the next page, which is the new fifty-eight, uh, thirty-five, right now. Repair sidewalks. So, we set some new standards, uh, we've put some new images in here. We kept one of the images you guys liked from last time, that's figure one. We added, we removed the image where it was like just completely broken up sidewalk, 'cause you guys said it was obvious to everyone, like that that's lost all integrity. It needs to be replaced. So we got one that was more in the fair sidewalk category with the big crack and a little bit of sloping. And then Dan, to your point last time, we, uh, defined, or we explicitly said what we were trying to have those images speak to below the images. So, we might be still work on the organization of all of that, 'cause I'm not sure if it reads.
Yeah, I might, I'd suggest maybe just, uh, after figure one, under the picture, you could reference the section there.
Okay.
And so it's not a separate sentence later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna work on the formatting. Then you'll see.
I'm sorry. Can you help me understand a rise or drop of more than one half inch per foot?
Yeah, so, we talked about that in the meeting last time, and I did wanna talk to our township engineer on the exact language of how he wants that. Um, and Ray, maybe you could shed some light on this, 'cause that was the verbiage that we talked about in the meeting when we played the video back. My interpretation, I guess, is for every foot of length, there's a half inch of drop. I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I kinda agree with Ryan, I'm not sure the sentence makes a lot of sense.
I think it gets confusing when you talk about pers, by, between sections.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a slope, it's a definite, get rid of the per foot.
And are you talking?
Because half, half, half inch is pretty, I mean, if you just think of the per foot, just a rise or drop of more than one half inch between two sections of sidewalks makes sense. But I think if we're saying one half inch is the max, you can't have more than a half inch, that's pretty tight.
Well, before it was an inch, and then last meeting we went down to half inch, so we do wanna, we go back to an inch? 'Cause an inch is standard, and all the other ordinance, as we looked at, an inch.
I, I think the problem you're gonna have is where you got a, uh, approach for the slope into an intersection. If you've got a half inch, and your height of the sidewalk is about four inches above the roadway, you're gonna have to have quite a long approach to get this slope that you want, and you might not have that distance. And the other thing is, when you do it, and there's gonna be somebody traveling in a wheelchair, they're gonna really have a problem with that kind of an angle to their wheelchair and still maintain a path on the sidewalk.
Look, they're gonna have to meet ADA requirements at intersections.
Right.
And that's, that's spelled out pretty closely, no matter what we put in here, it's gotta meet ADA, for new sidewalks, it's gotta meet ADA.
What's the allowed slope for, for generally a sidewalk, that's sort of going uphill?
I would, I would have to look at the ADA language.
And that, that's what it would be, under ADA sort of regulations?
Approach, yeah.
But it's presumably probably more than, it could be more than a half inch per foot, right?
It is.
It is.
I think it is.
So you maybe have to.
The, the cross slope on a sidewalk normally is a quarter of an inch per foot. So on a five inch, five foot wide sidewalk, it'd be an inch and a quarter from the high point of the sidewalk to the low side, crossways.
On, on a normal traveling path. But what are you gonna do about the, the wheelchair approach for, in a parking lot?
Well, isn't there those, uh, uh, new ways, they're kinda like rumble strips, right?
Yeah.
Uh, coming into intersections, would that help at all? Like with, uh, with new sidewalks that are being put in, Miles?
Yeah, those always get put in, those are more for, uh, for blind.
Those are for blind, yes.
Yeah. I mean, they help with grip a little bit in the winter, obviously, too.
Right.
Yeah, and they're for, uh, lanes for, uh, crosswalks.
Mm-hmm.
They're mandated for that.
I guess I agree that American Disabilities Act will cover the approaches under their standards, but what do we think in terms of sidewalks we'd like to see repaired? So we were thinking a, of one, originally we thought one inch per foot, like one inch, uh, I'm not sure how to say this exactly.
Get rid of the word, get rid of the per foot.
Okay.
If you've got two sections of sidewalk like this, if one's a half inch or an inch higher than the other, it's gotta be repaired.
So just.
Nothing to do with the per foot at all.
So should we call it sections?
Well, go back to your, your, figure two here. See, that's dropped down right there?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't, that's the differential we're talking about right there. How much differential can you have between those two slabs before you fix it?
What word do you wanna?
Well, isn't it maybe the?
I would just say one inch, period. Leave the per foot out.
But even that, it's like, isn't it, we're talking about the adjoining edges?
Yes.
That, the adjoining edges cannot be more than half inch, inch, whatever it could be.
That verbiage would be fine with me, too. Adjoining edges, no more. Or you just think we should.
Yes, that is what confused me, because I'm like, inches per, that's what I mean. I didn't understand, I was talking about slope, 'cause it doesn't use that language.
Yeah, I realize. It is a wonky thing to describe. We didn't know exactly how we wanted to do it. That was the language that when we played the video back, we were using.
Well, I see a lot of communities, what they do is they grind that higher edge down and feather it, so it matches the lower.
Yeah.
Yeah, people do that.
That's one, one way to repair it.
Yeah. Yeah, that, when we were doing the sidewalk scoring, uh, George, I think you remember, they did that quite a bit, how at the apartment complex, if you're looking at. But yeah, so adjoining edges, no more than an inch indifference. John, we can look into the approaches as well, and see if we wanna put any language about those at a half an inch, like a stricter standard for approaches.
Yeah, I think we should look at what ADA is recommending.
Yeah.
George? Can maybe even call up to the county and ask their engineer what they use for their standard?
Once we get this all in a more refined, I mean, probably following this meeting, we'll make these edits, and we'll send this whole section to the township engineer, have him give it a look.
Sure.
We just wanted to kinda get, you know, the, the legwork done.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, moving on to snow removal, so we didn't put the section number in for snow removal, but it'll be its own subsection, and we went with the more simple snow removal language that we talked about last time, I don't know if you guys got a chance of it? Look at that. Any questions about snow removal or?
Okay. That's pretty much the same as every municipality.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we kept it more, um, before we didn't talk, there was like one sentence in Bath, we looked at East Lansing, they had like several pages. We don't wanna look at the middle option.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so order to construct or repair, um, any, any comments for that?
The whole section?
Yeah, we thought.
Yeah, I just had a question under, under the section, subsection C.
Yep.
So you, you do talk about if the adjacent property owner is the only benefited property, but you don't talk about it. Is it just implied that there's some course of action if there's a shared benefit among several property owners? That there's no option for repair equivalent to the sole property owner who's benefiting?
I guess if there was shared benefit, then they would share the burden.
That's what I'm thinking, but because it's so spelled out for the single property owner, it just leave me asking the question, well, what if? And it's not answered, I guess.
That would be one of those things where I think it's like the eighty, twenty percent, or in this case, I would think ninety-five, five percent. 'Cause it don't, the only, like, what scenario would we be in? Maybe a trail that's on a golf course, and there's multiple properties that join it, or like a sidewalk that is cut down the middle of two properties? 'Cause most of the time the sidewalk's gonna go across the frontage of one individual property.
Right, I, I think you're right. I think you're right. It's just when you spell it out so clearly and explicitly, it just, but if.
We could put.
Doesn't leave you any wiggle room, does it?
We could put a sentence in there if there's shared benefit, or we share a burden, something like that.
That could be enough, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, construction standards, Dan touched those at all, are you gonna let the township engineer?
Just Miles, sorry, I was, one more thought on that issue, though. I mean, um, I think the key, though, is, it, it has to be adjacent to, because if you, if you're just looking at benefits, someone's gonna make the argument that, you know, I'm using that sidewalk all the time, even though it's not in front of my house, and so I'm gonna say that you should pay for some part of my sidewalk, because you're walking by my house all the time. Which is not kinda what we have in mind here, right? So, shared benefit, maybe it's not the only criterion to, you just gotta make sure it's adjacent to. Yeah. As you do already, but.
When they lay sidewalk, I'm a layman at this, uh, do the joints in the sidewalk line up with the property lines?
They don't. They don't.
So would that be a situation in which a single slab that crosses a property line needs to be repaired?
You cut it.
Yeah, it could. You know, no, it could, and it would be the, the cost would be distributed to two owners.
What you really want them to do is fix the whole thing.
Well, certainly, but I'm not gonna fix it in front of your house.
Well, that's what I'm saying, to Dan's point, a scenario where they might have shared interests. I have come up with a scenario, Ray.
We like you, we don't like you that much.
Somebody's always gonna do that.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Lots of times in new subdivisions, though, those joints, those joints do match the property line, because you build this house, you build it to the property line, and you stop.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's, in a lot of cases, but, in a lot of cases on a reworked sidewalk, it's not the case.
No, no, that's true.
Yeah, and it says here, too, when it comes to payment of it, the board shall establish the assessment district to the benefit of property. So as we go through this process, the board will have, and because it's gonna be such a one-off process, every time one, something like this plays out, the board will have discretion to say like, hey, this is a large stretch that we're gonna do here, there's four properties that are affected, but you're also on this main street area, so we're gonna assess all eight properties here. 'Cause there might be four across the street, maybe they share the benefit.
That's gonna be tough.
But that's why we let the boards.
Yeah. It's always, it's always been a question, you got a street, sidewalks are one side only.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
But that's why the board may make the argument that, if we have four houses, we need to replace this, it should also be the four directly across. I don't know. That's why we left it up to them.
Yeah.
They're voted in, they're best tool to make these harder decisions. So, alright, so anyways, moving on, okay. So we, any more questions about that one? Okay, so construction standards, we didn't touch them, we'll get an opinion from the township engineer, and we don't feel like we're well-suited to implement construction standards.
Yep.
Then we have the two sections that we removed, and we moved up to that earlier first section, kinda putting all the administrative stuff, um, earlier in the chapter. Uh, violations and penalties, didn't mess with that at all, and, um, just when it comes to appearance, take it slightly changed. Instead of the appointed officer, we just, uh, named the individual responsible. There's a lot of language in the township where the supervisor would delegate an officer, you know, when this was first ran in the nineties or the two thousands, and as the township's grown over the years and staff has built out, these roles and responsibilities are better defined, and so we're cleaning that up as we go. And then, finally, as we know with developers, they don't always read the entire ordinance, they kinda get into the zoning ordinance, and they look at that, and they produce a site plan, um, so if we were gonna make some requirements about commercial developments for sidewalks, we felt like we wanted to go ahead and move those into the site plan, uh, standards. And so we are also amending the zoning ordinance under section twenty point zero five L, I'll go to that. So we put this in with all the other development standards for site plans, just to make it more explicit to developers that sidewalks are gonna be required for commercial developments, as determined by the planning commission or the board of trustees.
I'm confused by this statement, though. How are we saying, are required or not required? If we're saying they're not required, why do we need easement?
If you, if the planning commission, under its authority, decides that they don't want sidewalks to be established as a part of the commercial development, in lieu of that, we're saying we'd like them to establish the easements for future sidewalks.
Yep. I think that's a good plan.
I mean, we're obviously open in any ways to rework that.
Make it clear for me, if you're just at the end of the sentence, at this time, or something like this.
Okay.
'Cause it says they're not required, period.
Well, that's true. Yeah, you got a point there, Ray.
Yeah. Yeah, we can clean that up.
They may be required in the future, just not today.
Yeah. Yeah, um, to be established at a later date, something like that. Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so that's sidewalks.
I have a, um, you know, my typical annoying grammar piece.
Now go for it.
Sometimes we say township board, sometimes we say board of trustees.
Yep.
I think it could be either, or township board of trustees. I think we should just be consistent.
Throughout.
And then sometimes it's capitalized, and sometimes it's not. So again, I just think consistency.
BOT.
Would there be any preferences on that? Okay.
Do we have a standard use in other ordinance?
It's all good, boys. It's capitalized.
I thought you were fixing that.
I know, it's one of those things where we're not doing it, but.
Global, global search and replace, right?
If you capitalize compliance officer, which I see you have, I think township board makes sense to be capitalized.
It's weird to me, 'cause you would think that you would always capitalize titles like that, but there's so many places in the ordinance, and in the past where they left it lowercase, I'm not sure why.
Well, if you're referring to the township board of Bath, I think it probably should be capitalized. If you're referring to like a township board, like in the state standards, yeah, lowercase.
Yeah, it's just weird, 'cause it's lowercase so many times, referring to like our board, the board shall, in lowercase.
Disrespect.
Yeah.
It's not consistent.
We'll capitalize it, and, um, I mean, there's, board of trustees sounds more formal to me, and more ordnancy and lawyerily, I guess, but, uh, there's brevity in just saying the board.
We know it's the township, so.
Yeah. Just go with brevity.
Board of trustees.
Okay.
BOT.
That's what I always do, just capital B, small o, double T.
That's what we do via email.
That's why you get so many bats in your email.
Alright, so any other grammar things we could mark up?
I don't have any grammar, but I, I'd still like us to investigate the idea of a sidewalk district, where people could opt, like we do lighting, and just pay an assessment every year, at least for a s- snow removal, because we've got a lot of elderly people, we got a lot of people that go away for the winter, or at least part of the winter, and would be really convenient to have the sidewalks routinely plowed, especially for really doing a, a safe route to school idea. So I think that there's a merit to at least investigate the idea of a sidewalk district. If people wanted to vote into it. Obviously, the only people that lived in the district would vote, but.
We can do re- research into like.
I don't think very many communities are doing it, but I think it's got merit to at least look at.
Meridian Township has a, they have a pathway ordinance, and that pathway is separate from sidewalks. If it's a pathway, there is an assessment to all township residents, not just one of the town.
So it's township-wide, Ray?
Township-wide. It's a millage that they do, and they've been, they've been passing that for years.
So is it part of Parks and Rec, or?
Yeah.
So they.
So they, and, and they plow all of them.
'Cause Bernia does have a Parks and Rec millage.
Yeah, I think that's separate, that's separate from the pathway millage.
Oh, it is? There's another millage just for the pathways?
Yep.
Oh my, they got a lot of redundancy.
That, that, Rizzi was built on Oakland Road, that big long bridge, and the green one further south, that was all paid for unless they get a grant with millage money.
Well, yeah, I know it was, but I thought it was Parks Millage, not Pathway Millage. It was Pathway Millage, you know? Interesting.
So Meridian Township clears all the sidewalks in the township?
Nope, just the ones that are pathways.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, they got a lot of pathways, though, all that word.
I think part of the research, Miles, you'd have to do is the impact on staffing. And that would, I think, address how much that special, yeah, the cost of it.
Plus the equipment.
Plus the equipment. Because at this point, we don't have our staff, you know, out all over the township, like, yeah.
I think it's worth looking into, but I almost think that what we're proposing here is a step forward, and maybe it's the first step. And if we think that it's not working, and people are ignoring it, and we're fining people, and we don't wanna be fining people, then we have to consider.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's gotta be package deal, but, but I think we oughta at least look at it as an option.
Yeah.
And the township engineer, well, at least Kevin Greters, has always had some good ideas about how to finance and fund some of this stuff, so I'll run it by him, too, and see what he thinks. I mean, there are Grand Rapids, they work with a lot of communities, see if they've seen any like, uh, funding models like this.
Alright.
Alright.
Thanks, Miles.
We'll make a bunch of edits, and we'll bring this back to you. Um, we'll probably make a bunch of edits, we'll probably send it to the township engineer, do some research about, uh, financing tools, um, so probably not next meeting, but maybe the meeting after, and I'll find what we'll stay kinda ready for a vote, hopefully.
It, it might be easier to do the research once we get a inventory after.
Well, that's true.
After we find out what we really will have at the end of the day.
Yeah, we, well, I'll get into that more during report from planner, but yeah, we, we did our sidewalk scoring, and that's coming out pretty well now, so. Also, just before we leave sidewalks, at the end of your packet, in case anyone's interested, or at the end of the sidewalk portion of your packet, in case anyone's interested, we, all the Michigan laws that we referenced throughout this ordinance, we copied in. Some of that's pretty interesting, too. I, I know I've learned a lot from doing this deep dive on sidewalks, and what municipalities are able to do and what they're not able to do.
Yep. It was interesting.
You talk about the MCLs, yeah. Yeah, those are pretty interesting to read.
Yeah. And it, it wasn't surprisingly a pretty polite read, too. They weren't, you know, they didn't dive in too deep. Okay.
Alright, thanks, Miles.
Thank you, Miles.
Okay, so the next item, new business, we have one item, which is the capital improvement presentation, so we've got kind of a, a one-man show.
Yeah.
Miles, you wanna say anything before we start, or?
No.
Alright, so.
Well, actually, so, there are just, I'm sorry, there are, uh, two that you gentlemen saw last year.
Yeah.
Um, those are up to be rescored, and there's four more that got introduced this year, so just to make that distinction.
Okay.
And I can, I can touch base on those from last year as well, if you'd like.
That'd be great, sure.
Okay. Well, let's start with those, then. Um, so last year, we put in, um, eh, let me just back up a little bit. All of these, except for one CIP project, involved the Park Lake Corridor, that north of Park Lake, uh, from the beach to West Wausser Park and the boat launch. Um, except one. Um, so the first one from last year was to re.
Which one you got?
Okay, you got that one, hold up. Uh, which was a multi-sport court. The township is very limited as far as sports facilities goes. We have the soccer complex, and that's about it. Um, we don't have any courts. The school has a couple basketball courts. I put this in last year, uh, to be installed to the north of the bathroom building, under the vacant lots that we removed the home.
Yeah.
And this would be, uh, basketball, volleyball, pickleball, kind of a modular court that would serve multiple purposes for outdoor recreation and Parks and Rec, if they could use it for some sort of event, possibly. Um, in that.
Won't be an issue.
Sorry?
I said that won't be an issue.
Oh. Um, and that was coming in at around fifty-four thousand dollars. I'm sure within some inflation, that'll affect the price of that. I didn't re, I didn't get a new bid on either of these two projects.
That's fine.
It, it's pretty much just gonna be inflation, I, I think. The, the labor is the same, labor intensive, not changing any, any parameters with that.
When we go to score these, we'll just do a six percent inflation, that's the average between last year and this year.
Okay.
Then we'll put the, when we put the number in the budget, rather you round it off, like, instead of fifty-four, one seventy-three, it'd rather just be fifty-five thousand, or something like that. These are, these are S and Cs. These are, these are S M Cs and not.
Yeah, and these were, and, and that one came with a, a hard quote from a company. This is not just a number that I took a stab at.
So essentially, there's no, there's no change, I mean, other than adjusting the numbers, the, the budget numbers. There's no change to the idea?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just to clarify, when I said that won't be an issue, I meant that it won't be an issue if people want to use it.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. I had a question about the ten foot high fence. It, it would, you know, I, it would just seem like that would really limit the other things you could use it for. Granted, those fences are there to, you know, to keep the ball in and stuff like that, but I, I just think it might be more advantageous if there was a lower fence to, uh, you know, around it.
Okay.
Like if you wanted to have a craft show or, you know.
Well, and I think that it's not like rate tight to the court either. There's a, a space around the court that it would be. But if, if you're gonna have, you know, tennis rackets and balls flying around, five foot fence doesn't do very.
No one it out in the street.
Yeah. And it may be more important to have that fence a little higher on the street side rather than the other sides.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good point. Just a thought.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, um, let's move to the board in place. And that, that's been in the project, or in the C I P process for quite a while. This dates back to, uh, Becky Goodwin's put it in a couple of times. It's, uh, just over ten years old. It's showing its age. I believe that the lifespan on that was about ten years for prediction. We've got a pretty good life out of it. It's in, we patched it several times. Um, again, that was another quote from the company that installed it in the first go around. And I believe that one was just over hundred, hundred and forty-two thousand for that. And that is actually replacing the area that there's wood chips now. It'd be eliminating the wood chips and going to a completely.
So it would o- o- overcome the wood chips as well, all the way out to there? Yeah, I wondered, I, we walked around there during the Solstice Festival and, and, uh, wondered where, you know, wondering out loud where the, the new.
Basically where the, where the wood chips exist now would be where the port of place.
And they don't, do they excavate underneath it too? Are they gonna take?
They would have to, to put the, the sub base down. I don't know exactly, uh, they didn't really have specifications. I do have some from when the original playground was designed, but there's drainage and there's several layers of base. And, um, and then a base layer of the.
You can really see where that water sits, you know, when we get a lot of rain.
Yeah, and, and that hopefully will be mitigated with our parking lot engineering that we've, we've done for the parking lot. Which I plan to put in the budget for next year to do.
Yeah, I mentioned that a little bit about a permeable surface maybe that would mitigate a lot of that water runoff, you know?
Yeah, and there, and I can show you plans. I did put that in the C I P just because we've already had the engineering and this has been in the works for a couple of years. Uh, I can share those, if you'd like to share those, um, the underground water control system that they proposed. And then basically in this triangle area where the cars are parked now, would be a detention pond with a water control structure.
Where does the water go? Does it run off? Does it go towards sixty-nine or does it go toward the lake?
No, it goes toward the lake.
Okay, I, I noticed there's a, there's a manhole cover and a.
Yeah, and it would flow into those. They proposed the, I believe there's two catch basins that are in the parking lot, which are twelve inch. And they're proposing put in a four foot catch basin to flow into the, the other storm drain along the Park Lake Road there. Yeah, which would then go onto the, onto the road into the boat ramp. Any questions on that one?
What you got next one?
Beach bathrooms.
Beach bathrooms. So the beach bathroom building was a project that came up at our recreation committee meeting. Uh, I believe Dwight Washington brought up the, um, kinda the idea. We really, since COVID started, this beach has been extremely popular. And the Port of John down there gets hit pretty hard, uh, figuratively and. But, uh, so it, it is kinda, kind of unsightly to have that small, there's a small barrier there and a handicap stall. Um, porta potty there that's changed out, you know, I think once a month they come and change it or pump it. The bathroom building that I have in here is from a company called Romtech and they're out on the west coast. And that's where I got my numbers from. I thought that they were a little bit high, but that would be for this company to come in and install it. If we were to use a local contractor and lo- and source our materials locally, we could probably do it quite a bit cheaper. Uh, in there, I would say. Yeah, so ve- very little maintenance. If you've been to any of the public boat launches around, um, Michigan, there's basically a vault toilet. There's no, there's no running water at the beach, so we would have to use something, there is sewer, but there's no running water. A vault style toilet. In this Romtech system, they have a, it's a sweet, they call it a sweet smelling technology where it's ventilated. There wouldn't be any issue more than a normal Port of John as far as scent drifting to the nor- uh, to the residents nearby. Uh, it's a very nice looking building. Did I include the plans, the drawings for that?
Yeah, you did.
So they're very nice looking buildings. You can.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you, I just spoke informally with, uh, Karen about this, uh, why not put exact same bathrooms like we have at the, at the beach? And just drill another well there? I think you'd still come under that cost.
I'm not sure with.
For permanent.
Being that close, permanent being that close to the water.
Uh, I don't think you'd have a problem, longer you have municipal sewer and, and.
That's something that we can definitely look into. This was a.
I just, I just think the people up on the hill would really get the, the smell of that, you know? They seem to have a real high, uh, uh, flow of, of air through.
And I haven't had any complaints for the Port of John that's sitting there now. That's been there for years. I'm, I don't think we've ever had a complaint.
For a permanence, you know, I mean, it would just look, look a lot better and then also you could even put an outside, uh, wash shower like they have down.
That's, that's something that we could look into.
You could do that if you wanna have portable water, but there's a lot of places that I've been to, it's absurd. This is not portable water, do not drink it. They even have to have a well that meets.
Well, if we, I mean, there's a well just with two, in fact, that Wes Wasser like that, then they're probably thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars to drill a well like that. I think that, you know, to, if you can't get the municipal water, I don't know if water water might, water mean runs that way.
Stops at the community center.
Yeah, that's what I thought it did up there. So, they're just a suggestion. I just think it would be better for, we wouldn't have the pumping costs, you know, and then and I think the maintenance would be a lot less and it would look a lot better.
The other, the other thing with, the other, my other point with the vault style toilet is you can keep it open all winter long and you don't have to winterize anything. You don't have to heat it, because you, you get into, you know, in the winter, it's getting used minimally by the ice fisherman or anybody that's there. It's still available, but we don't have any costs of heating it. We don't have to worry about pipes freezing.
I thought they used to take it out in the winter, didn't they? That, that porta potty at the.
That's what I'm saying, we would have one available still. It could continue to be open if we had a vault style there. That's just like in any other state park or.
Can I say real quick, anecdotally too, um, you know, when I'm driving by this area on a Saturday, uh, getting ice cream or whatever, um, a lot of the people utilizing the beach, if they have to go to the restroom, you know, people don't sometimes prefer to use Port of Johns. So we'll see a lot of families make the walk to the more formal bathroom here. Just to use the bathroom and then walk back to the beach. So.
Yeah, I see that.
Definitely, definitely a demand for it, I guess.
Any other questions or comments regarding that one?
On, on the restrooms like that, are they locked after hours? I mean.
We, we lock the, the bathrooms at West Wasser Park and mostly to discourage people from using the park after hours. Our parks are closed at, at dark. So, I don't know if, I know that with fishermen, typically they're, sometimes they're fishing after hours. You know, after dark, especially in the winter. It's dark at four o'clock and their crappies start biting at, you know, four thirty. If there's any crappie in there, I'm not sure, but.
Somebody just caught a fourteen inch crappie.
Yeah, um, so I, I wouldn't be, bathrooms are really not that attractive for vandalism. Although we have had some vandalism done in the other one, but that's, that would be up for discussion.
It's a good opportunity too to partner with the art committee too. I know, didn't they do some of the artwork on the last bathroom?
Yes, they did.
And there's, there's a, a smaller bathroom. This was kind of the middle of the road. They have a single stall. I figured it'd be nice to have two. But basically, the other building is, is half this size. This was kind of a middle of the, middle of the road. Option.
Good idea.
Any further?
The next one I got is the boat launch.
So boat launch, Park Lake, uh, boat launch reconstruction. That boat launch has, I think, well, been well overdue for a facelift. It's, the parking lot is beginning to crumble and fail, so at a minimum, we need to resurface it. But this C I P project is encompassing the boat ramp itself and expanding that to a two lane boat ramp. Currently, the boat ramp that we have now is only use, usable on one side of the dock. If we could expand that out, I think that would, on the heavy, you know, if there is a heavy day, uh, it makes, it makes it easier for somebody to come up. Dock their boat, go get their truck, maybe another boat's even coming up at that same time. And then as well, re-engineering that whole parking lot. It, it is not.
Who did that anyway? I was, I was wondering, who came out, who came out with that parking?
I don't know. It, it's not, it's not ideal for parking boats and trailers and vehicles with trailers. Like, I would have it engineered, um, to make it usable for that. And kind of going into the next one, which we purchased those two pieces of property to the north. I think you start with surveying and doing a land combination with those three properties there. And then also including your, the kayak launch, which is coming up next in that same parking area.
Well, one thing we talked about too internally, and this is purely discussion, nothing, no big movement on this, is we've always talked about trying to, uh, connect the non-motorized network here, ending at the Creamery. With kind of, you know, the other, um, highly used facility here. If you're redesigning the boat launch and boat access. You get the non-motorized piece of that into that redesign as well. And now you've got only a, even a much smaller gap to connect, uh, non-motorized. So, just in our.
And those numbers that I used were based on, uh, current parking lot construction prices. I don't suspect there's gonna be a ton of water control, since it's such close proximity to the lake, there's only so far it can go. So there may be some, a catch basin or something like that that has to be included in there. But there shouldn't be much more maintenance than any, any normal parking lot, crack ceiling and seal code every few years.
Ben, do you see, just cause we've talked about too, with the new property being acquired to the north, being able to wrap this drive a little bit farther and get additional parking in there?
I think so. I think there's definitely some dirt work that's, that needs to do, cause it drops off in elevation there closer to water level. But I think that it's doable. I mean, that parking lot was built up quite a bit to begin with. Is, is my, my understanding.
Those two, uh, parcels, I, I always call them the Gupta parcels. Um, boy, if they were the same elevation as the boat launch area, I think that'd be great too.
I would also like to, you know, maybe you even include some roadside parking there, cause parking is a huge issue with, with this area. I mean, you definitely can get more people than you can cars down there. And along the road, kind of like what we did at the beach, widen that out, yeah.
Roadside parking too would help with, uh, just like the planning perspective here, would help with, uh, um, speed issue there. You know, how roadside parking always helps slower down speeds, so kind of a benefit there, I guess, as well.
I think you might wanna keep in mind too, just if you're increasing substantially the impervious surfaces there, just the effect that that may have on the lake.
Yeah, and, and I think that these parking lots is, West Wasser Park and the boat launch are gonna kinda have, they're gonna have to go together because the boat launch is gonna catch all of West Wassers runoff as well.
Yeah, sure is.
That's why I think that we should look a lot closer at permeable surfaces for, try to get away from asphalt. Especially as close to the lake as it is. There are ways to use, uh, milled asphalt, you know, recycled asphalt. And compact, that works well.
I mean, you can always do, you can always look in a, an engineer that's a hydrologist will be able to, uh, look at this as well. Um, use retention ponds with some, uh, plants that will help, yes, high grasses. Help with infiltration, grab that water storm for a little bit. Hopefully filter it.
That's not a, that's not a very resilient lake, right? I mean, it's, we, we've kinda, we're already sort of pushing it a great deal in terms of nutrients, and so, being mindful of that, I think is important.
Any questions? Moving on to.
Door access.
Door access next. Okay, so this is the only project that I have that is not related to the Park Lake Corridor. This, uh, this project is something that Gary Smith and I have been working on. Getting some prices around and planning for this. I think it's important not only to, you know, protect our people in here. Our staff, our residents coming in to do regular business.
You guys.
Yeah, you guys, um, and, and our assets, you know, a big one. We have some buildings on our campus that have millions of dollars worth of equipment and, and, you know, there's evidence in the police department. And with this day and age, um, you know, safety is a huge concern with active violence and those sorts of things. And having the ability to immediately be able to either lock this building down or if there is an employee that's terminated, or we can immediately disable that key and avoid the cost of rekeying the entire building.
The paper itself.
Yeah, um, so it's just something that, getting into our current century. You know, locks and keys are kind of thing of the past. You saw what happened at MSU, immediately they went to a keyless access system.
And now the lawsuits are coming in. So, that might be a good, good, uh, hope you don't mind me talking. That might be a good opportunity to utilize ARPA funds.
This, this project was quoted out through Night Watch, which is a local company. Uh, I'm working on, uh, with a couple of other companies to get a, to get a couple comparable quotes. It's a, it's a heavy hitter, but I think overall, this would be encompassing every single building and door, exterior door within the township campus here, not including the community center.
I really like this project, but I did have a little bit of sticker shot. Is it something that we could do in phases?
Yes, so, and I was afraid of that, um, exact problem. It is a lot of money. But the Night Watch is actually bidding this out, building kinda à la carte. So our, Gary's and I, initial goal was to get this building and the police station first. These are our kinda high priority, high traffic buildings. And then move towards our other high assets with the fire department and, um, the D P W garage and the senior center being last.
Do it in phases?
But doing, doing it in phases. That, that is definitely a, a modular system that you can add on to and, and do this in phases for sure.
Ben, one nice thing with these systems, cause we learned a lot about these systems when we were going through the marijuana facility reviews. Because they're actually required by the state to have a system like this. So that's kinda my first experience, um, in person, learning how this works was. You, we have a lot of sensitive records as well in the basement, for example, um, that, and employees coming in and out. If something goes missing, you can even, it'll log in the time of when employees come in and out and what employee card got used. So you can pinpoint, you know, um, what kind of situation you're dealing with, I guess.
Who, yeah, who's accessing the building at what time? You can pull a report for all that information. And, uh, the other thing, you know, that comes to mind personally is with the fire department. You know, with, right now, they have a keyless access system, but it's a punch code. That punch code can get tossed out to anybody. You know, their family members or, and, and it doesn't change very often, so. It's, this would be very easy to, you know, get rid of a key. There's a high turnover rate of people that come through the fire department. Employees, you know, they get issued a key and the code.
Is this a magnetic key system?
This would be like a FOB system.
Kinda like, okay.
Yeah, it'll be a FOB. But immediately, we'll be able to terminate that key and disable it, so that, that key will no longer, and not have to give everybody else a new key.
I think that's the biggest part, because when we were going through the reviews, Sumrise Force and Gary was there, too. They were talking about disgruntled employees, and you know, they got millions of dollars of product in there, and they, a high turnover ratio for employees as well. They were saying it pays itself off, for at least in that industry, within the first couple of years. So, buy once, cry once type product, I think.
And this system will also monitor the doors, so if there's a door that's actually propped open, and you can program it, a lot of times, you know, somebody needs to move a box in or get something out of the car, and they'll prop the door open, but you can program to whatever time it is, if that door's left open for more than two minutes, or whatever the timeframe is, it'll send a code to whoever the manager of the system is, whether it's someone in the main office or the police station or myself. It'll send an alert to that there, there's been a door that's been left open or propped open. And it will also alert you if the door's been forced without a proper key swipe.
A lot of times, too, it'll, you can set it up to have an alarm go off. Some, you know, vacuum from outside, you know, double-door systems usually, but it'll start buzzing after, say, ten, twenty seconds. So, that's, that'd be pretty neat, too.
I think there's a lot of different directions that you could go with this system. There's a lot of different things that you can do with the software.
And I, I note that they specify Verkata as a hardware. Verkata makes all kinds of security cameras, too.
And this, this system, that system actually would be compatible with the security camera system. And like I said, this is just one, one company's quote. There's several other companies around that, that do this sort of thing. This was, I was just looking for close proximity companies. This is, they're from, they have a base in Duett. I think they're based out of Grand Rapids.
I didn't just notice.
But the county, the county uses Nightwatch. There's several other big municipalities that use Nightwatch. I believe Charlotte just went to Nightwatch.
That Verkata, is it, they use cloud storage, too, for their security? I just, I didn't know.
And we have cameras now. We're not so much worried about the camera system as much as the door locks at this point, but they are compatible.
That's good.
Any other questions? And I think the last one was the kayak launch.
Yep.
Like I said, that, we would, I would like to plan that along with the boat ramp reconstruction. And this is a project that also came up through the parks and recreation committee. It's been supported by the committee. There's a couple of drawings down on the bottom. This would be a, an ADA compliant kayak launch. And it's kind of a floating system. You'd have an anchor point on the shore. It's wheelchair accessible. There's a, there'd be like a bench with grab bars for people to, to pull themselves up. There's, when you launch or take your kayak out, there's bars to pull yourself up in your kayak. So, this doesn't limit to just people that have all their abilities.
Would, would, you'd have to take that out in the winter?
That would be a project we'd take and put in and out every year. You couldn't let that freeze in.
Yeah.
Is that something you could use canoes and other?
Yep, yeah, you can use canoes and kayaks.
That's basically that, that kayak launch is just so ADA individuals, you know, that are disabled can.
You can roll a wheelchair right down the ramp.
They can literally get, get their kayak in there without any help, you know.
Yeah, one Duett, that's very, very similar to that.
Right at the river.
Yeah.
In Ferguson.
I was at a park this weekend tubing down the Muskegon River, and I saw this structure, and I said to my friend, who also lives in Baton Rouge, I would love to have this. And then I read my packet, and I thought, oh, my gosh, kidding me? I'm super into this. Last year when I went there, there was someone using it, so you could see the mechanics of like, people getting in, and it's, it's fascinating. You were tubing. Yes.
And again.
Don't lodge tubes.
Again, with, you know, with all the out, the spike in outdoor recreation from, from COVID, we've seen a ton of paddlers. And they're, they're either launching at the boat launch or at the beach. And if they had a designated spot to do that, it would.
Point them to it.
Yeah, you can use that rather than, you know, pick up a parking spot at the beach or or the boat ramp.
Yep. Not to get academic and nerdy, but I read a study on equipment like this while I was an undergrad in environmental science. The study basically proved that facilities like this create more equity in terms of use, because not everybody can afford a boat, but it still helps people get out on the water. And by getting more people out on the water, that creates value in the community for that resource. And then the community kind of incentivizes the community to come together around that resource. So, if a millage comes in twenty-five years for the lake, there's more buy-in for that millage, because people are like, okay, Ben, I personally use the lake more now than I would have before.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rick. I actually saw a, and a company that actually builds a kayak rack to sell to municipalities, and they, they stock it with kayaks, and you can rent them. And there doesn't need to be anybody there. It's like a kiosk where you, you just use a credit card or whatever, and you take a kayak out, and it logs you and everything, and you launch it, and off you go, and then bring it back, put it in the rack. I thought that was a really novel idea. I think that might, you know, maybe down the road, that might be something you want to look at.
Yeah. I, I do want to mention funding for all of these. All of these projects technically could be funded with ARPA funds. And also, the kayak launch and the board in place have been submitted for a Spark grant through the recreation committees. We'll see how that goes, but after we get our recreation plan done, we plan on, we can go through more money as far as DNR grants and a lot bigger projects. And this really could be considered one big project of, you know, making this whole Park Lake corridor, corridor.
Wasn't the DNR involved in that boat launch initially?
Possibly. I don't know.
It seems to me they had, they had some monetary.
Possibly going.
Yeah. Oh, maybe that was it. Yeah, I just, it was a long time ago, but I just remembered the DNR, they were in partnership with the township or something. I mean, this was in the sixties, I think, but maybe that's an idea, you know.
They, they participated in the land and.
I just, you know.
Hasford Brothers and.
Your brain just kind of.
Kestner built the boat ramp Swiss cheese.
Thanks, Ben.
You're welcome.
Any other last questions here? And so, Miles, just to look ahead a little bit, so we're gonna be scoring these in like a month, is that right?
Should have had that schedule pulled up, I should have known.
There was, there was one thing, one question that I didn't really answer on any of these, and that was priority level. And I think the way that we have to fund it, I think it's a high priority. You know, we have all of these. I think they could all be fit into that, you know, depending on how we want to use our, our funds and grant monies and available available dollars to, to pay for these. I, I think that while we have this ARPA money, we need to use it. We have a deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
That's a good idea.
When, when it comes to funding these, though, it might be, if I was on the board, I would want to know your rankings. If you were to rank these six projects, what would be your one, two, three, four, five, six? Just so they could say, well, if you can't have them all, which ones do you really want?
Right. And, and I can go back through that, and if that's something you want me to do.
Might be helpful.
Help with your scoring process. I think we can, and maybe even it makes sense to do it in phases. You know, you have to get the boat launch before you do the kayak launch. That might play into it as well. I can, I can score them, you know, one through six, and I'm gonna say number one is gonna be the door locks for me. Just because I think it protects us, our assets, the residents, everybody benefits from it.
Protects us from lawsuits, as talked about.
Yep. Everything else is, you know, recreation.
Ryan, did you have a comment?
A question for Miles. This is everything we got.
These are, this is everything we got. We were expecting, just not deviating too far from what we were talking, everything we're talking about today. We were expecting one more from the senior center, and we even delayed our process to allow for that, but an application never came in. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the reasoning behind that. Outside my wheelhouse.
And nothing from like, fire department, police and fire board?
I think they had some nondiscretionary.
Yeah, some projects did go, but they were considered nondiscretionary or considered maintenance and repairing outside the scope of the CIP.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yep. So, it looks like we're.
You did a lot of work there, Ben.
Another question?
I thought you were just waving.
No, I was just gonna say, when they write their grants or request grants, they may want to reference the, you know, projects that we have going for 2024 already. That might play into the picture, because it's right around the corner from, from that project.
All right, so you saw that this is coming back to us August eighth, that we'll be asked to score these projects.
Yep.
Okay. All right, Miles, your report?
Yeah, so I just wanted to talk about two items. It's been a while since I've given you guys a update on commercial developments throughout the township, so I'll just quickly run through them. I'll use my map here to remind myself and full guided tour, I guess. So, I don't know how often everyone gets out on SAG and all, but obviously, things are moving over there, a lot of stuff going on. So, the Big B Coffee prefab building got dropped in maybe a week or two ago. They still gotta do their parking lot. I learned in the engineering meeting that their utility work is getting finalized now, so they have made their connections to the utilities. They're moving pretty quick. I mean, it's one of those modular buildings, but I would expect at their current rate, mid-fall, to be open. So, that's great. Also moving very quickly, and I almost think they're like in a competition with each other, is the Lake Lansing Surgical Center and Ace Hardware. Both moving very fast. We had some, we had to go out on site and look at some of the sidewalk that's there, because they're gonna need a pole to go, power pole to go right where the sidewalk is, so just like they've made this kind of indent right here around this pole, they're gonna, and they made it indent here around this pole, they're probably gonna have to make an indent right here around that one, but that's getting in the weeds a little bit, but basically, construction's going great. Everything's going fine. There is a little bit of drainage work and a little bit of pole placement where their generator is gonna go. They, they're seeking to go with a slightly bigger generator than they originally showed on plans. Medical facilities always need one of those giant Cummins generators on the outside of the facility somewhere. It's required. We're working with them now that they're going with a larger one to slightly do a minor amendment to their landscaping plan to make sure that's well-screamed from the street. So. Then, with Ace Hardware, really haven't had any issues with these guys at all. The big news there was the establishment of an easement for sewer and water running down the entire spine of the parcel. And they brought in commercial-grade sewer and water lines. To me, what that means is something's going in the back at some time. I don't know what that is. We don't have a plan. They haven't communicated to us anything. I don't, I haven't heard a rumor, so I've got nothing. But no one spends half a million dollars on utilities and infrastructure if they don't got some kind of plan. So, that's that. Sumrise Force, basically built out at this point, they've, they still got a large pile they need to burn. Left a voicemail with Dimaxium earlier this week, letting them know that the burn ban has been lifted. Or, it was last week when I got back from vacation. I said, hey, it rained a lot. Burn ban's been lifted. Let's burn this pile of stuff. No movement on that. Maybe tomorrow I'll give them another voicemail and ask them what's going on. They did level out this entire part of the site, so that's nice to see. No more ugly dirt pile there. And they've now seeded about half the site. Half of the back portion of the site. The front of the site has always been seeded, and they're in good standing with us as far as their landscaping plan goes. We actually went out there and counted trees and bushes. Came out ahead of our tree and bush count, so we got some extra trees and bushes, so. You know, we do get a little bit in the weeds with it, but, you know, we try to make sure that the community's getting what they've been promised.
Good.
And then East Lansing Storage, everyone else on this corridor is in a race to get done, but not East Lansing Storage. So, I'm not gonna make any bones for them about what's going on. I don't know. They, their side of the story is they're doing a heavy amount of work. I think their contract was like $400,000 or something to redo the entire underground infrastructure for drainage and surface water flow. So, they ripped out all the tiling and they're redoing all the tiling to catch all the water. So, obviously, kind of a nightmare scenario for them. Last spring, they were not catching all the water. They, basically, their business wouldn't be viable if they didn't do this work, because people store their stuff. They don't want it to get wet, obviously. So, they're doing that work. I talked to John Morrison earlier this week on the phone, and he said that he very promising signs coming out of this site. He's feeling really good about where they're headed. So, that was reassuring for me to hear from him. So, that's good. In terms of, I, I know some of, there's, some of you know and have been involved, and there was a concern from the neighboring property about surface water flow coming on that property. All of those issues have been solved at this point. Mr. Hasford even did some concrete work with them, putting in actual concrete shoulders to catch that water and then get it to grates, and then the grates are carrying it underground. So, now it's, all the water problems are on this parcel, so.
Good.
That's good. Okay, and then moving here. We've got commercial construction plans in the building department right now for Park Lake Apartments, and they as soon as, you know, there was radio silence for like two months, three months. And then as soon as those plans hit our office, they were like, when are these getting approved? And they've got a number of conditions they gotta work through. I think Kevin, the township engineer, is working on their Part Forty-One right now for sewer. We gotta get an easement established. Some of this we can do after the building permit's been issued, but I think they still got two or three conditions left that they need to fulfill prior to the building permit getting issued, so they're working on that. We did do the calculation for sewer today. I didn't talk to you about this yet, but it's forty units, one REU. So, three thousand times forty, it's a hundred and twenty thousand is what it's probably gonna be. So, quite a, quite a bit of money there to do the hookup to utilities. Water will probably be more, but most of that will be from board of water and light. I, these are professional developers. They build apartments for a living, so I hope they won't get sticker shock with any of these numbers. It shouldn't be, they shouldn't be blindsided by this. Anybody that does this for a living knows hooking into utilities is a big expense. And then, if you guys remember Josh Tyler with the landscaping company on Peacock Road, he is at the board next time. That will be his second meeting. The board will be able to take action. So, he did, we, you guys remember, he came back and amended site plan a bit. So, yeah, that's looking promising. So, so far, no big pushback from the board. No, no big pushback from the residents on the street. He's probably a model applicant on how to move through the process and get buy-in from your neighbors. So, that was great. Okay. And then, I, I guess this isn't really commercial development news, but it is commercial activity. We did get a request for a zoning verification letter for the Rocks. Usually, that means there's some type of bank doing some kind of financing. So, either they're refinancing, they're making some improvements to the site they need to finance, or more likely, their property is changing hands. So, in my view, it, it always kind of stinks when apartment complexes change hands, because usually, that means new management, and new management usually means we're gonna have a year of flux on them figuring out how to manage the property. And right now, I mean, you guys, the police department, the Rocks is the best managed property in this area, this small kind of ocean of apartments here. So, we'll see how that goes, and we'll see what happens there. Okay, so that's commercial development.
You didn't mention the, the Big Bs, which just kind of parachuted in one day and.
Yeah.
We were talking about that.
Yeah, no, that was the first one I, I talked about. Yeah, they came in.
Oh, you did say?
Yeah, it's a modular, but it came in super quick. Oh, but you, you know what I didn't talk about was the Dunkin' Donuts and the Berry's Bagels. Dunkin' Donuts has their building, they submitted their building permits, their signed permits, all their trades permits, and those have all been approved and issued. I don't know what's going on. What I've heard at this point is Big B Corporate has an acquisition process for contractors. So, they have like a portal that contractors have to go into and bid on the project, so it just, it. it just, it.
Dunkin'.
Or Dunkin', I'm sorry, Dunkin' Donuts, yes. They have a, a bid process for developers, Demaxium offered them to use all their same contractors that were already doing the building, they're like, no, we're not gonna do this, we have this whole process we need to go through, so I think that's just dragging out. If anybody hears about Berry's Bagels, though, I don't know what's going on with that. I know they've got the sign up, I know their wall sign permits have been approved, but we haven't received a building permit yet, so. And I know that the franchise owner is local, she's a Bath resident, so.
I noticed they had their signs up, but.
Yeah, they got their monument signs up, but not their wall signs, but their wall signs have been approved. So we'll see. Was thinking about reaching out to her, cuz I don't know who I'd reach out to at Dunkin', but since she's local, I was thinking about reaching out to her and seeing if there's anything she needs, or if they're having trouble finding somebody to do the commercial plans, or what's going on. All right, so then the other thing I quickly wanted.
I'm sorry, two quick questions.
Yeah.
One I most recently asked you about, so if nothing has changed, just say that. The old Timmy Ho-hos, have we heard anything about interest?
The old one?
No. Tim Orns.
Timmy Ho-hos?
Yeah, some people call it that.
Never heard that.
I, you know, I always, that was a great location.
Do you have a younger kid? Is that where you heard from?
I have three children, yes.
Timmy Ho-hos.
That's what my generation calls it.
We used to call another place Ho-jos, but, you know, Howard Johnson's.
So they now have a reorder again, they've been active, they've been mowing grass, which is great.
Finally, yeah, that, that was like this high.
We did go through the process this year to be able to, when people aren't mowing their grass, let us know, cuz we got a cleaner process now, and we can just get somebody out there like that day. But, yeah, they got, they got somebody trying to market the property, it's a great location, I don't know what they're asking, but I, I'm just happy to see that they've got a real estate agent and it's back on the market. I don't know what was going on for like that two or three-year stint where it was just like no call, no show with that property, but they're still paying their taxes.
I really wanted to be.
Miles, do you have a way for me to send you a photo you could put up there for us to see? I, I took a picture of that pass-through between, between, oh, what the hell's the name of that?
Yeah, if you can email it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monticello's. In the, in the Ace Hardware, I went over there and looked at that, I wanted to see where that was gonna go exactly, so I took a picture of it so we could see it.
Yeah.
If, if you want, I could have you, you know, everybody could look at it.
Yeah, sure.
I'll ask one more question while you're doing that. Have you heard any interest in the old gas station area down by the rest of the development?
No, and.
The Admore, yeah.
No, we talked about, I know, it, it's, gas stations are hard, so they're still paying, it's not technically abandoned, they're still paying their taxes on it, it's just vacant, and since it is such an older gas station, I would imagine that whoever buys it's gonna have to either, either they would like to make it another gas station, which is tough, because obviously it's right next door to Meyer. A lot of competition in this area for gas stations, and I'm not sure if a market sale would support essentially a fourth one going inside like a half a mile radius.
It seems ripe for fast food, now that.
It would, it would be perfect for fast food, the problem is if a fast food chain was to buy it, they would have to do the environmental to remove those underground storage things, and that project right there were at a million dollars.
Well, I, I would think that the owners of the property would have to do that first before they could be able to market it.
It would probably be a part, they would probably want to make it a part of the sale.
The owners would be on them.
They really goofed when Meyer wanted to buy that property, and they refused to sell it to him.
Yeah, he refused.
Yeah, that was a bad move.
Yeah, it was a move. I emailed that photo to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think just that whole corridor's gonna look really nice and.
Let me see if I can.
Upkept, and then there's gonna be this like rundown gas station in there.
Where a, where a semi frequently parks, what's up with that? Did you, have you noticed that? He must sleep in there, cuz it sits there for like three or four days. Well, it's possible. Yeah, there it is, right there, yep.
So that just looks like they're doing the foundation work, they're putting down the crushed limestone, it maybe looks like, but yeah, they'll, they'll pave that with asphalt.
I just thought you guys would like to see that.
Yeah, and they did send in an amended plan with all the pedestrian, you know, cross hash markings, pedestrian crossing signs on the parking lot, so.
I was surprised how the, the grade goes, I mean, it, it's quite a grade going down to that right there.
It is, they did bring up, it used to be even more of a grade, they brought up the whole Ace Hardware site, probably on average in that area about six, seven feet.
Wow, yeah, I noticed they put a lot of fill in there.
Yeah, it's a lot of dirt, you know, it's like, I wish they would have pulled the dirt from the Demaxium site, they could've made a good deal there, I don't know what was going on. Okay, so that's that, and then the last item I just wanted to go through was the grant application update, so we did apply for the MEDC grant, we got that all done, that was, it was a heavy lift, for sure. Taylor came in clutch on the week I was gone and was able to close, which was great, obviously Taylor, super smart and put together a really good application packet. We feel really good about the packet we put together, if anything, I'll be able to know if we don't receive the grant, that there's nothing we could've done better for what we have in terms of our bandwidth and staffing here, and the project we presented was as good as I think this community was gonna be able to do. The timing obviously worked out really well, that we kinda had a project in the works and engineering plans already going, and very had consultants on board helping us with all of this, Consumers Energy even gave us some photometrics pro bono, so a lot of people came together to make that happen, right ups from the road commission, we got letters of support from every business on the corridor, as well as Mr. Kessler, the Food Bank and BSNA. We're hoping as well that the township is on MEDC's radar a little bit as Project Forge have, have been talked about, you know, maybe, I don't know, hopefully they're like, oh, we know Bath Township, so hopefully that will help, but.
Well done, everybody.
Yeah, and just the dollar amount that we went for was, it was, it was up to a million, but it depends on the scale of the project and how much money we have in it for what we're allowed to ask for, but we asked for 602,000, so we'll see, we'll see, we'll get scored in the fall, I talked to Mark Trotter and Doug at the road commission today, that's when they score us, and if we get awarded, I, I need to figure out that date with the MEDC, because if it's too late into the fall, that could affect our timeline for the Webster Road build-out, like if we don't know yet, we might have to push that to, instead of spring. And Karen, I haven't talked to you about this yet, but instead of spring of 2024, it would be like midsummer 2024. But I'll talk to the MEDC and hopefully be able to figure out that timeline. We're hoping to get that project rolling in spring, that way we'd avoid the heaviest construction during the school year season, cuz obviously a lot of school traffic on that road. If we go to midsummer, then we catch a little bit of that school traffic while we're wrapping up, but today, kind of our plan B was to start from the north on the project and work our way away from the school.
That's a good plan.
So.
Who makes those decisions at MEDC? Does it, does staff run, or does it go to their board?
That is a great question. I will, I'll ask Lee, cuz they kinda have been our inside, they know how the MEDC operates, I don't know.
Miles, you didn't really talk to Mark Trotter today, did you?
I did, if I didn't say this already, Mark Trotter is back.
Oh, no way.
At Clane County, which is great.
Is he really?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's been back.
That hasn't lasted long.
No, yeah, I think it was a mix, and I, it's not my business or whatever rumor, but I think it was just a mix between Inham County and how things were going there, and I think Doug was able to go back to the board and say like, hey, they were having a really hard time finding somebody with that skill set, so.
Well, you don't get a PE, you know, with his kinda credentials, for what they're willing to pay, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Miles. All right, so we have a second opportunity for public comment. All right.
So thank you for another enjoyable meeting tonight, I, I always appreciate your discussion and how well you work together. I wanted to share with you that we have received notification, and I think Miles was talking about it prior to the meeting. I had submitted a letter of support to Senator Sam Singh for a project that runs from Lake Lansing Road up through Stoll Road, I was incorrect, I said state. And we were awarded a $10 million grant to help with improvements in that area, and I'm just gonna read a little bit from that. It's full-depth road reconstruction, creating an all-season route for commercial traffic. It aims to widen the paved shoulders to accommodate bike lanes, construct sidewalks, upgrade traffic signals, and make improvements to the county drain system. In addition, you will all be happy to know that it also includes sanitary sewer upgrades.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, which is fantastic news. So that will mean that development can continue to occur in that corridor, which is something that's been stalled, as you all know, for quite some time, because we just didn't have the capacity down there to continue to support apartment buildings or other projects in that area, so fantastic news, another heavy lift for the staff, but we're all in on making it happen. We have a meeting set up already with the players for next week to start discussions, so we're pretty excited about that. Miles mentioned the MEDC RAP grant, he and his team, Heather included, Joey included, did a lot of work on that. And kudos to Taylor, because she also submitted a DNR Spark Grant that week, so she had two grants that she submitted for that week, fingers crossed on both of them, cuz they could mean big things for this community as well. So just a lot of exciting things happening, so we're looking forward to all the changes. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for us, please.
I have a second question, in regards to that grant that we got, is there, has there been any talk at all about putting entrance ramp at Chandler Road and 69?
Yeah.
That, you know, when they built that, that's all there, so I always wondered, you know.
That's a, that's a piece of history that's been passed along to me for quite some time.
You and I have talked about it.
Yeah, we have talked about it, I've talked about it with quite a few people, former treasurer Steve Wisswasser and I discussed it quite frequently, but those, that, that, those talks have not resurfaced, and I'm not sure why it changed or.
It's M dot, you know, it's something to do with that, but I just was surprised that they spent that much money to rough that in, and then they don't even wanna hear about it.
Yeah, I do think it creates more opportunities for the Webster Road corridor, so I, I do, I am hopeful for the MEDC grant and what that could mean for this corridor becoming a developed area, and for us to help craft what that looks like for this community.
I would, I would, I hope you don't mind me still talking about this, but I would think that that would even give us additional impetus to wanna pave and upgrade Drumhead Road to Chandler, because that's not gonna go away, that Chandler access and to get to the highway.
There are two, there are two board members that are championing that as a goal, and they're, and they're term on the board as trustees, so I don't, I think we'll continue, I think we'll continue talking about that, but at this point, it's, it's almost to the tune of a million dollars.
Right, oh yeah, cuz the last time you were submitting it, it was what, six, 680, something like that?
Last number acre, it was 750. So it just continues to climb.
Right, and we didn't get the new, new fire truck, and we didn't get Drumhead or Pave, neither one.
Yeah.
Well, if you're gonna pave Drumhead, you oughta make it a Class A road.
Well, exactly, and that was, I drove by, drove down there twice last week just for that purpose, and it's really narrow, and it needs to really be built up if they're gonna pave it, so, and I would think that there's gonna be some serious truck traffic on it if and when.
Well, there will be, yeah, that's why it needs to be a Class A road.
Yep, so anyway.
On your grant, what, what was the limits, the project limits on Chandler Road again, from where to where?
From Lake Lansing Road up through Stoll.
Lake Lansing to Stoll?
So it'd be just past the entrance to Hockahla, just north.
Oh, okay.
It's almost kitty corner right there by the.
Just before the highway.
Yeah.
But maybe we'll get a right turn lane at Club Course. We need it.
The safety in that area is, is a priority.
Does that project include, including that, including that drain?
Yes.
On the east side?
Drain, yep, drain improvements as well.
Good, yeah, that may, that may.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that all gets done for 10 million, but we're gonna do our best to make sure that all the improvements are, are, you know, vetted.
I saw Senator Singh a couple of weeks ago, who is also a friend of mine, and he told me very purposefully, I'm fighting for this, I'm gonna get it in, I got it in the Senate budget, now we're working on getting it in the conference committee, so appreciate him a lot for.
Very much so.
Carrying our water.
Yes.
Literally.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming.
That's great, Karen, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, so if you recall, I mentioned that our meeting that would have been last week was canceled due to the holiday, but just some things from around the township that might be helpful for you to know. Township has a new phone system, which is always exciting to upgrade our technology. We still have a couple of vacancies on committees, and I say that to all of you in case you know people who wanna get engaged, the Public Art Committee, Senior Services, the Sewer Board of Appeals, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, especially the Sewer Board of Appeals and Zoning Board of Appeals, it's nice to have folks who have that sort of level of technical understanding and skill, so if you have township residents who you think would be great for that, please pass that along to them. You can also help bypassing along our open positions for staff, we're still hiring paid-on-call firefighters, we're, it seems like always hiring police officers, right now it seems to be a real hard market for, for those folks, it would be nice to have a full force here soon, and then hiring a new staff member over at the police office, so again, you know, great candidates who are looking for a job, the township is a good employer, I would argue, send them our way. And then we will re-engage our meetings next week on the, I think Monday is the 17th, and we've got a special meeting at five o'clock for talking with the board rules, if any of you have strong feelings about what our board rules should be, please come and let us know at the, at the special meeting, and then we'll pick up our regular meeting at six o'clock. And since we canceled a meeting, I would guess that our agenda's gonna be pretty, pretty large.
I have one question, and it was just a random question about the board trustees, how come they don't, when they have to cancel a meeting like for a holiday or something, how come they don't automatically have to make a makeup meeting?
There's just the. No rule that requires it?
The work never goes away, so I would think that they should have like something that say, hey, we gotta make this meeting up, you know?
Yeah, I mean, any board member could suggest it when we do the canceling, how about we reschedule for a week later, the next day, or any, nobody suggested that, staff also didn't say like, guys, we really need, like, that's great, but we need more.
Makes that one meeting that month really heavy, you know, and I would see that, that would be a lot less stress if you could mandatorily, you know, if you have to cancel a meeting, you know, reschedule it, so that you have two meetings no matter what, every month, suggestion.
You can go to the meeting at five o'clock.
What's that?
You can go to the meeting at five o'clock.
That sounds like a good board rule suggestion.
There you go.
We, we, I would anticipate us having a bunch of special meetings coming as we get into the budget season in the fall, so we will end up making up some, but it'll still be topics.
Unfortunately, those are always budget work meetings.
Yes. Fortunately, I would argue.
Watching paint dry, I know, I was at them, I know.
Hopefully, well, some of these projects will make it through, and it'll be more exciting this year.
There you go.
Sweet.
Anyway, thank you.
That's it for me.
All right, any other points here? Okay, final comments by commissioners, anybody?
Just a comment or question, that Ace Hardware Midwest Power project, I was talking to people at Midwest Power down in South of Oak, apparently they're moving to here, they're gonna have two locations they're gonna.
Oh, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
That's what the guy said.
They're moving to our location, they're getting ready to our other.
Where's the other one?
What's that? Where's the other one?
Yeah.
On Jolly, well, South of Jolly Road, it's now and out, it used to be in.
It's mothballed now, though.
It's what?
That one on Jolly is mothballed.
Oh, the one on Jolly, it was on the north side of Jolly, this is on the south side of Jolly.
Right, that, that one, I'm saying, I went over there twice and they were closed.
On the south side of Jolly?
Yeah, you know, where they moved from the north side down there, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't get in there, but anyway, that was just.
You must be at the wrong location, guys, I, I just borrowed lawnmower from last week.
Oh, you did?
Or they see Ray coming and they lock up the door.
It's down there by that fun center or whatever it is that.
Yeah, that dead-end street that goes toward the freeway, there's just no street.
Oh.
I don't know.
Miles, have you heard anything from the, I always forget the name of that development over by Peacock Road and the, the large 80-acre parcel out there, came to us about that one?
Miles, have you heard anything from the, uh, I always forget the name of that development, over by Peacock Road and the, the large eighty-acre parcel out there, came to us about that one?
Oh, they. Oh, yeah, you know what, I forgot about that totally, with everything going on, um, no, they never submitted anything. And they really seemed like they were like in a rush to submit that application, too.
Yeah, I talked to Phil Hans about that, he's, he, you know, he calls it, he calls it the Frag Mighty Farm. Cause there's so many, you oughta see it, it's unbelievable, I went over there and I droned the whole thing, Miles, if you ever wanna look at it, I spent a couple hours over there, a couple batteries worth, and. And filmed the whole thing, cause I was so interested in it, you know, and it's a beautiful area.
They still got, I mean, they're, I would say maybe with how many lots they have over here, they might be fifty percent through their build-out. It's taken them, you know, two, three years to get to this point, so they might not be in a super big rush.
Have there been houses on this other side?
This, this side is almost all the way built out.
Yeah, I saw, seen those, those are beautiful.
They've still got this entire side to go.
Yeah.
I don't think I've issued one zoning or building permit for that side. So, and the, these are beautiful homes going up back there.
Big, big, big houses.
Yeah, well, it's all part of that tax base.
Pays our salaries.
George, again, thankful for those that work behind the scenes to represent our township and, and make our township better, it's great, I appreciate it.
John and I were talking for the meeting a little bit on maybe taking another run at the county to see if we can have a talk with them about road standards. Um, and see if we can get a lesser sort of, something that's more suitable for some of the rural developments that might be springing up and back.
That'd be great.
Something that's more environmentally friendly than curb and gutter and asphalt.
Would you guys want us to try to have that conversation, or to be involved in that conversation?
George maybe logically should be involved a little bit, I think, if George wants to be, if he's willing to do it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, otherwise I think it'd be great if you can lead it, if, if you got the time.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's important, too.
Yeah, if they talk about, I would, I would like to be involved in. We've talked about it for a long, long time, and we've, we made some effort, five years ago or something, and there seemed a little interest, but it didn't go anywhere.
Didn't go anywhere, the, the road commissioners mothballed it.
That's another, just so everyone, um, if, make sure everyone's on the same page, that's just another tactic, instead of reopening the Pandora's Box of private drives. This would be another avenue to establish, uh, a road, that's a road commission certified road, but to a lesser standard, cause maybe it's only serving four residential houses. And it would help us mitigate, it'd be like the compromise, it'd be the best of both worlds, it'd still be a road commission sanctioned road without all, all the. Red tape around getting that road, and still keep us from all of the mitigated land use conflicts that come with a private drive.
Right, right.
Yep.
Sounds like a poster child for South Webster Road.
They and other municipalities and counties do this, it, it's a thing, so.
Speaking of roads, George, the money we, that the township and the county have for resurfacing existing roads, we must have got a lot more than we thought we were gonna get or something, cause.
The, the board.
I didn't think you were gonna do.
Right, there's several members on the board and, and the board itself just basically, um. Allowed it to happen, you know, we, we have, you know, our list that we have every year, and we're allowed, I think, if I may include Karen in this conversation, four hundred thousand dollars to begin with.
That's usually what I.
In, in the budget, which is fantastic, thank you, I mean, residents, thank you, take, take, thank the board for that. But then, we also have other projects that, you know, are, along with that, that don't get done and they keep, get pushed off. Last year, they, they, uh, okay, okayed an extra five hundred thousand for a project. Can only imagine what would happen if that didn't happen, we'd be way down, and so that's what happened this year, the board, thank you, uh, allowed another five hundred thousand dollars-ish.
Six.
Yeah, well.
I voted no, to be fair.
That's all right. Just wanna be honest.
Oh, it was you, it passed.
On behalf of my colleagues, you're welcome. But, but again, um, thankfully they do that, because otherwise that money would be pushed off to the next year, and you know from being on the board and the committee and involved in it. That just adds up, year after year.
I know, they're doing, they're doing an awful lot of roads around Hawk Hall, and a couple of them really need to be done, but some of them, I thought, oh, you know. They weren't, they weren't as bad as some road, and I don't know.
Always helpful to hear.
But that's also because they have their, the project cost is tremendously, uh, larger when they have to come back and do that section another year later separately, yeah, separately, so.
I was surprised, too, when they, when they milled off the asphalt, they took it right down to the gravel base, instead of just taking an inch or two off. Which is gonna make it last a lot longer.
Sure, yeah, it certainly will.
Also a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
Any other comments or thoughts?
Uh, you and I talked about taking another look at that, uh, conservation ordinance, I don't know if it's, if it's for publication or not, but. Mr. Kessler is kind of interested in a project to develop some, uh, land near the sod farm that he and, uh, another fellow own. And, uh, I think it would be an excellent spot for, uh, less intense development than would be normally done in an area like that. And it would also enable us to put in a gravel road that'd be more affordable to build, maybe do some law, more environmentally friendly development.
So, I think we've talked about this, oh, maybe, Miles, I think it was before your time, but we had a.
Oh, yeah, it's been about five years.
Conservation Development Ordinance, which we went through this body, but it ended at the board, essentially. Uh, they had questions about doing it in the, in the rural, um, zoning of Bath, and might be reasonable, I think they kinda misunderstood some of it.
Okay.
I can send you the last copy that we worked with, and maybe the last agenda that, that, at least from the planning commission.
That'd be great.
Where it was an agenda item, you can have a look, be curious to know, but it's, it's finished in some sense, right?
Yeah.
But I'm sure it'd be, it'd benefit from having you have a look at it.
Yeah, and we, uh, you know, we've been working through the clear-cutting ordinance, and we've been working through wetlands ordinance, so I wonder if there's any crossover between those three.
Yeah, there is. Yep, there is, potential.
So that'd be great.
Okay, I just sent it to you. Other thoughts?
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn. Support, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Or adjourn, thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you. Miles?